Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Semasko?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Item three additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to move that we make the following additions to the agenda. Could we place the Columbus White Barn cement flooring contract on the agenda as item 11 R. and at the end of the session before we recess to go into executive session for collective bargaining negotiations.
Second?
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item four approval of the agenda?
I move the approval of the agenda as amended.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Meetings of previous minutes?
Mr. Chairman? I move that the minutes of our September 18th, 2014 commission meeting and the October 2nd, 2014 standing committee meetings be approved and filed.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Proclamations, none at this time. Item number seven, consent agendas.
Chairman, I would move at this time to approve items 7A through 7J on the consent agenda.
Second?
Discussion on any of these items? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number eight, reports of standing in special committees. I'm going to start with Commissioner Semasko. Board? Commissioner Tomian?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing at this time. Commissioner Greattown?
No, I have nothing.
I just gave you all a copy of resolution that I received from Berlin Township today. It's Resolution 2014-06 in reference to the Rover Pipeline, and I'd just like to have a quick part of the record.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Riley?
No, the only thing I would like to say is at the landfill, they have made two connections to natural gas out there, and they're working on the third one. So very soon we'll have all three units hooked up and be off the propane.
Very good. Just one quick thing. Commissioner Riley and I went to the city of Marysville on Monday on the convention center update. What else did you talk about?
Our new RV van.
Yeah, RV van building.
And the convention was a big thing.
Yeah, and I did the landfill piece of it for them, just to give them some more information. There had been an article, you know, out in the papers that talked about us looking at potential increases at our landfill with tipping fees to tell them what the impact would be for them. Many of you on this board know that the city of Marysville did take the county up on its services, I guess, to go out and bid their trash contract, extremely happy with it. They saved substantial money going through that and any increases that would potentially they would see would still be under what their contract was. So they were very thankful for everything that the county did and helped them. That's it. Item number nine, any...
If I could, just add to that. I know it was reported in the Times Herald, just so there's no misunderstanding, in potential tipping fees that will be raised at the county. It's been discussed, $8 to $12, I believe, was reported in the paper. That would not be like the water rates that you've seen in the Times Herald. This would actually equate to 50 cents to a dollar per month per household. That isn't per month, so I just want to make sure there was no misunderstanding as far as any potential tipping fees.
Yep. Okay, very good. Citizens address the board at this time? Are there any citizens wishing to address the board? Seeing unfinished business? Item number 11, new business. Item number A, approval of county disbursements.
This time I'd like to move to approve the county disbursements for September 2014 in the amount of $39,559,952.71.
Second?
Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greattown?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item B, the 2014 port security grant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move and have approved the 2014 port security grant in the amount of $24,500.
Second?
Any discussion on any of this? Roll call. Commissioner Greattown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number C, 2014-2015 CMH contract for inmate services.
Chairperson Bohm, at this time I would move to approve the agreement with the community mental health for inmate mental services for a term of 10, 1 of 14 through 9/30/15 inclusive in the amount of $136,167.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greattown?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item D, the 2015 marine safety grant application.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the 2015 marine safety grant application in the amount of $324,044.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greattown?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item E, the interagency agreement between Public Guardian and Community Mental Health.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to approve the interagency agreement between the Public Guardian and Community Mental Health for the period October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015 in the amount of $54,000.
Second?
Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greattown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number F, Columbus County Park Park acquisition.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the agreement with the community foundation for the purchase of property in Columbus Township to expand the Columbus County Park in the amount of $77,000.
Support?
Discussion. Just one thing I would like to chime in on this. Previous, when we did these, we would have to go get an outside agency to assist in these property acquisitions. I can't remember the name. How are you been around? But it would take a lot. There was a lot more paperwork. There was a lot more things to do associated with that, and I'm really happy to see that the community foundation is stepping forward to assist us in this because I think it will be a mechanism that we'll be able to use for other acquisitions down the road, and it just really reiterates their commitment to the community, and I think it's very solid.
Especially in light of the fact that this gives us an opportunity to go for a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant, which will cover, I'm thinking, at least 50,000 of the $77,000 purchase. So the actual amount that comes out of our Park and Rec Millage will probably be less than 30,000, would be my guess, and huge savings to the taxpayers of the county. And that's money that we can spend on other park recreation needs.
Anything else? Roll call. Commissioner Greattown?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item G, I'm sorry.
Yep.
G, the 2014 St. Clair County winter tax rate request.
Chairperson Bohm, I'd like to move at this time to adopt Resolution 14-41 portioning taxes and to approve the winter tax rate request L-4029 and apportionment report as presented.
Support?
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We received an email note today from the staff that said that this item had been amended. Do we know what the amendment was? I tried to look at it today, and I couldn't remember what the original was.
It's my understanding that the amendment or the items that are new to the agenda were actually added yesterday. So if you began looking at the agenda packet online yesterday, you've got all the new information. All it was was simply additional information that was provided to you that was not posted initially when the agenda packet went out on Saturday.
I understood that, but I didn't know if the numbers are changing?
No, they have not.
Okay, that's what I was driving at.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, no change in the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Watch the dollars.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greattown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item H, the St. Clair County Retirement System Ordinance Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the St. Clair County Retirement System Ordinance Amendments as presented and provide vocation at the earliest possible date.
Support?
Bill, I guess you want to chime in on this?
Sure. This is an issue that the board's been talking about for some time. As I reported at your committee meetings, this was initially presented to you back in May. We did have to go back and do some additional research, including discussions with the pension board attorney as well as the county's attorney. What you have before you, what was presented at the committee meetings, is the result of that additional research. The changes include board resolutions that made amendments to the ordinance all the way back to 2003. So what this does is it simply brings all of those into one complete document. It also includes, some of those resolutions include changes to the ordinance to comply with changes in the Public Employee Retirement Act for the state of Michigan. There are a number of changes that are simply typographical or citation changes, codification changes, that were made because sections were brought in, sections were taken out. So there was a lot of cross-referencing that needed to be changed to address that. There is nothing in here that affects the retirement or pension program for existing or new members, so there are no changes being made to the benefits that are provided to current retired or those that are going to be retiring anytime soon.
Questions for Bill? Carl?
I have the same question, Bill. I reviewed it when the agenda first came out, and then today I got a note that, from the staff, that there were changes made to this item.
Yes, and they were citation changes. One of the things that we found in reviewing them is, for instance, there was an area that referenced section 6.8. Well, 6.8 didn't exist anymore. It needed to be changed to reflect 6.7. So those were the kind of changes that were made in the last 24 hours, just as we were going through and double-checking it. There were also a number of typos that we caught that we figured, okay, let's take care of that and clean those up as well.
So there weren't any substantive language changes?
No, simply citation.
Thank you.
Any other discussion for Bill on this? Roll call? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on, item number I, the 2015 Community Corrections Grant Agreement.
Mr. Bohm, I would move to approve the 2015 Community Corrections Grant Agreement in the amount of $305,142.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Brownfield reappointments?
Mr. Chair, I would move the appointment of Dan Lockwood, District 5, for the remainder of a three-year term expiring 10/31/15, and the reappointment of Dan Casey, Economic Development Alliance Director, for a three-year term expiring 10/31/17 to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors.
Support?
Discussion. Mr. Riley, I think you have a vacancy in your district.
Yes, I do. District 4, there is a, and I'll be looking into that.
Yeah, very good. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on, the Department of Human Services Board reappointment.
I would like to move, Mr. Chairman, that we reappoint Reverend Thomas Seppo, District 1, to the Department of Human Services Board for a three-year term ending October 31st, 2017.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Workforce redevelopment.
Chairperson Bohm, I'd like to move at this time to reappoint Dan Casey, Economic Development, and Forster, private sector; Carter Heitzman, private sector; Mike Moran, labor sector, to the Workforce Development Board, each to a two-year term expiring August 1st, 2016.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item M, the Administrator's Controller 2015 budget presentation. I did talk to Carrie Hefting today. Carrie had a prior commitment that she had to make. That's why she's not here this evening. And I talked to her a little bit about some dates and times and schedules and things. Bill?
Yeah. What we'd like the board to do this evening, you received the document at your committee meeting. We'd like you to officially receive and file the document, and then establish a public hearing date. I believe what has been recommended would be November 6th. Not sure who has that.
I have the item, yeah.
And then we will move on from there. If the board would like to schedule any workshops, we can certainly work with you to do that. You may or may not be prepared to set any of those dates today. Maybe that's something you want to let us know, and we can always schedule those.
So we could either do a November 6th for an adoption, or if we have a lot of questions and those types of things, we can go through that information on the 6th, and then we could kick it to November 20th?
So I don't know what the flavor of the board is.
I think that schedule works out fine.
Okay. We can do it, and then we don't have to adopt that evening if we want to, you know, if there's a lot of questions that come up at it and stuff, and then we don't feel comfortable doing it at that time, then we can kick it to the 20th or whatever.
Frankly, myself, I've gone over it.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying. I mean, we have that option, so it's not like we have to do it that, you know, specific night.
And I really haven't heard many comments from anybody about the budget at this point.
No. You weren't here eight years ago, Carl. Lucky you.
And proud of it.
Well, in terms of...
You wanted to do him.
I think one of the notes that was in the report, I can't, I didn't find it in here just now, but it's going to be 2021 before we get back to having the revenues that we had in 2007. So I hope our constituents out there have some appreciation for the financial challenges that we've been facing, and the fact that our administration, I think, starting with Sean Groden and now with Bill Kaufman, have continued to present us with balanced budgets and maintaining our rainy day fund.
All right, any other discussion on it? Tom's got a motion.
I can move to, Mr. Chairman, to receive and file Administrator Controller's proposed, excuse me, 2015 budget and to schedule a public hearing for November 6th, 2014 at 6:00 PM.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on, 2015 Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program Grant.
Chairman, at this time I would move to approve fiscal year 2015 Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program Grant application in the amount of $50,091.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that monetary or no? I missed that.
There's no match.
Okay.
2015 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant.
At this time I would move to approve the 2015 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Agreement in the amount of $78,667.
Support?
Discussion.
There's no match on that one.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item P, the proposed addition to the animal control shelter. I got Mr. Monkslow here this evening.
What we're requesting tonight is approval from the board to move forward on an additional to our, addition to our current animal control shelter. A few years ago, we were given a trust fund from Rose Cousins for improvements at the animal control shelter. We were using some of these funds in the last few years to make improvements to, let's say, the ventilation system. The latest improvement that we would like to do and ask them for your approval is to add, in addition to the animal control building, we identified between the veterinary that's contracted and also our veterinary technician, that the puppies and kittens that come into the animal shelter do not have the immune systems to fight off the diseases from the strays, the dogs and the cats that come into the animal control. On recommendation of the veterinary, he does not want us, at the present time, to adopt out these kittens or these young animals because they're sick after a few days coming into animal control. If this addition is authorized, we look to build an isolation unit where we could keep the puppies and the kittens separate from the adult animals. In the meantime, we'll be able to put these up for adoption where presently, the majority of them are being euthanized. What it will do is build an addition on the existing building. We'll then move our veterinary office and techs office into part of that, then remodel the existing area for that isolation unit. And we're looking for approval to move forward. We received three bids from three local contractors, and the lowest bid would be from Norton, or Nolan Construction, and looking for approval to move forward.
Tom?
How big are we talking, the addition?
The addition will be 16 feet 8 inches by 21 feet 4 inches. This will be completely financed from the Rose Cousins Trust Fund, not any tax dollars will be used.
Yeah, if any of you haven't been out to the, 10 years ago, the place was atrocious. A lot of improvements have been made. A lot of the new cages for the disease, you know, we bought new cage systems at that time, and I know they're still, when you bring animals that are sick, they're still in those same confinements, I guess.
And unfortunately, animal control, we have to accept those animals, sick and stray animals.
Yeah.
Lot of good changes out there.
Yeah, and I'm glad he brought up the point of the money from a private donor that put that money aside. I don't think a lot of people know that a lot of improvements that have been made to that animal shelter have been through that private funding source, so.
Jeff, is there going to be any type of area of honorarium or something, a plaque? Is there anything they're doing to honor the person that made the donation, or is that part of it, you know?
What was that? I couldn't hear you say that.
Are they doing anything, Ron, to acknowledge this gift? A plaque of anything at the building, or are we doing a proclamation, or anything that doesn't go?
Well, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Something I haven't thought of, but I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the addition of the animal control shelter and award the project to Nolan Construction in the amount of $30,500.
Support?
Second? Roll call. Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Greattown?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number R, the Columbus White Barn cement flooring.
Did we miss Q?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we did. Resolution 1442 ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with MNA 1.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 14-42 ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the Michigan Nurses Association, Unit 1.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on now to item R, the White Barn cement flooring.
Not sure who has that. Mr. Chair, I would move that we, I don't have the specifics here, for whatever reason.
Does anybody have that one?
Sanctum?
It was a late addition. It may not have put on.
Anyway, I would move the approval of the contract for the cement flooring for the White Barn for the Columbus County Park. The amount, we had some discussion about that last time, and I think the two contracts were closed. There was one from Pro Cement and another one from Sanctum. And we had initially suggested Sanctum, but Park and Rec recommended that we go with the low bidder, which was Pro Cement. They checked out their qualifications. They're very well qualified, and they were the low bidder, and they're from Wales Township.
From where, how?
Wales Township. And so I would recommend that we award the contract to Pro Cement.
That's part of your motion?
To who?
Pro Cement.
Is there a second?
My concern, well, second, but for discussion.
Okay.
My concern with me, why can't we get this sorted out before we make a motion on an item that there's a question on the amount and the two local contractors? Is that settled or not settled?
The issue, when we discussed this at committee, was the fact that we had the proposals before us, but Pro Cement, and I don't know the reason, they didn't put down that they were a county contractor, and this is county millage. And so I think the feeling from a majority of the board members, Sanctum...
Of Park and Rec.
Yeah. And then, so it went to Park and Rec. That's when we found out that they were at Wales Township. Township company.
I don't think there was ever a question of if they were not a local contractor. The point that I think that we brought up is Sanctum Contracting has a major investment here in this area, and they're a substantial taxpayer.
Oh, absolutely.
Huge.
I would like to table, I would like to table this, to take a look at that and get that nailed down, and how far apart were they, and I hate to...
If the board wants to continue with our original motion, which was to award it to Sanctum, I don't have a problem with that. I understand what Mr. Bohm is saying, they're a major contractor active in our county.
Good. We have a history, using our chair's recommendation, for the amount of $76, I think we should amend your motion to award it to Sanctum, as initially intended, in our discussion last week, when we did not have the information from Pro Cement at that time, on the initial bid. We did get the information afterwards, and for that amount of money and a major contributor to the county, I think we should award it to the one we have a history with.
There's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. I'm not sure what the motion is, so perhaps...
The motion was to go with Pro Cement. Would the maker of the motion be amenable to changing it? I have no problem with that, if that's the will of this board.
Somebody wanted to offer an amendment to make that Sanctum, is that what I hear? Can amend it?
I offer that amendment.
Okay. Your second?
I support.
Mr. Riley, I think second.
So the motion is to award to Sanctum Contracting, the dollar amount is actually $14,552.
There's been an amendment and a second on the amendment for Sanctum, at what price?
$14,552.
So we got to vote on the amendment, then the motion?
Let's, yeah, roll call on the amendment.
Uh, amend.
Yep.
Hit a big volume voice on the amendment. Uh, let's do a roll call on the amendment.
On the amendment, Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Seven zero on the amendment.
Okay. And then the motion is to award...
Motion is to award, uh, Sanctum.
Sanctum Contracting.
Cement contract, $14,552.
Do you need a restatement of the second on the amended motion, or are you okay with? I would second the amended motion.
Got it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tomlin?
I'm confused.
It's for Sanctum.
The original motion was to award it to Pro Cement.
Right.
Right, and then they amended, they amended that motion. And you approve that amendment, and now we are voting on the amended motion, which would be to award to Sanctum.
Commissioner Greatop?
I'm not confused, yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Can I abstain? No, just kidding, yes.
Commissioner Riley?
I'm not confused either, yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes. Moving on, item 12, Administrator's Controller.
Let me give you an update on some things that are going on with the Veterans Affairs Office. The counselor position has been filled by a very well-qualified individual. The director search continues. The closing date for those applications is early next week, and there will be a committee forum to assist the retire, pardon me, the Veterans Affairs Committee with the selection.
Are you aware of any applications being sent in yet for that position?
As of Tuesday, there were 15 applications in. The Veterans Affairs Committee did hold a meeting on Tuesday night. They have approved a revised set of bylaws, and it will be presented to the Board of Commissioners for your review and approval on the 6th of November, and then moved to the full board for your approval. They did vote in a new slate of officers. The chairperson of the Veterans Affairs Committee is Dan Lane, who I'm sure most all of you know at this time. They will have a three-member board at this point, and that's how they'll be moving forward. The Convention Center construction continues. Last couple of days, there's been some cement poured in the pre-function area. The brick is mostly up in that area as well. The glass for the pre-function area, as well as the event hall, should be showing up on site tomorrow or Monday, and they will begin installing and assembling the glass immediately. All of the walls are up, the exterior painting of the event hall is completed as well. You'll see a financial report, a monthly financial report, in the agenda packet for this month, as it is every month. It includes a review of some of the change orders, and you'll note that in there as well. We did have an operations meeting with SMG last week to begin talking about presenting a proposed budget to you in November, as well as some updates of their multi-year pro forma or business plan for the facility, and again, we'll be presenting that to you in November. They are also working on some of the, establishing some of the rates for rental of equipment, as well as rental of the facility, and some of the procedural guidelines that will be used for moving employees back and forth between the McMoran Facility and the Convention Center itself as well. Presently, they continue to use offices in our building and our suite until the Convention Center is completed, at which time they'll be moving over to that facility. The lobbying group has been busy, working on your behalf. Currently, they're partnering with the county EDA, Kimball Township and the city of Port Huron, on a U.S. EDA grant that, if approved, will help them move forward with developing some of the cost estimates and some of the pre-engineering work that needs to be done on the site that has been looked at in Kimball Township as the next large industrial site. Most of that property is ownership, is currently under the ownership of the County Drain Commissioner. The lobbying group has also begun working with us and with SEMCOG on the Regional Prosperity Initiative. If you have any questions about that, see me after the meeting. That was an effort undertaken by Governor Snyder to consolidate the provision of state services into some new district boundaries, and our lobbying group was beginning working with us very closely on that. Some of the issues that administration and staff has been working on, we've been working with the sheriff's office, the kitchen equipment has been arriving at the Intervention Center. You remember the contract we signed with Aramark included the removal and installation of new kitchen equipment out at the facility. I'm not sure if it's all been installed yet or not, or if it's being installed in phases. It's very likely that the equipment that's being removed will not go to auction. The feeling is, it's probably not going to get much of anything at auction, and the value of it just for scrap is higher than we would get at auction. So that's an issue that Purchasing is working with the sheriff's office to try and resolve. The county is also making some investments inside and outside of the courthouse. If you're interested in any of those, please see me after, after the meeting, and we can talk about them. The VDI, you remember the IT Director being here several months ago to talk about a change in how we address off-site or mobile connections to the county's network? The testing continues. She will be here in November to let you know how the testing has gone, some of the issues that have come up, how they've addressed them, and she will be preparing a recommendation for you that hopefully you will receive and take action on before the end of the fiscal year. RFPs, or Request for Proposals, are being prepared by the Purchasing Department for going out to bid on workers' comp coverage. It's been a number of years since we've bid out workers' comp, as well as fleet maintenance. They're working on that as well. We've had some discussion about bidding out banking, as you know, that was done a number of years ago. That is a very intensive effort, and we may want to be talking about that at subsequent meetings on whether or not we want to move forward with bidding out our banking. Work on the permits to allow for the development of the wetland behind the day treatment night watch, as an impound lot for the sheriff and the prosecutor's office continues. All of the forms have been filed, all the reports have been filed with the DNR. They received them probably three weeks ago. They said it would take about six weeks for them, as well as the EPA, to issue their findings, and as soon as we have a decision, we will be moving forward. The project has gone out for bids, the changes to the site, so once those bids come in, as long as the permit has been issued, we'll be able to move yet this fall on some improvements to that site.
Just correct, I, make sure I understood it. Once we get the wetlands permit, we can move forward with the improvements, one of those being the expansion to the day treatment night watch center?
No, actually, that project is not ready to move yet. That project is included in the CIP, but it's not scheduled to be undertaken or kicked off for a couple of years yet. What we are getting ready to do, as soon as we can, is further back on that piece of property. We've made allowances for day treatment night watch expansion, but further back, there has been a plan for the sheriff's department, along with the prosecutor's office, to build an impound lot, a secure facility, that would house vehicles and other types of evidence that has been impounded by those two offices. That's what will happen first.
I remember, this is back 12 years ago, when Dan Lane was sheriff, we had impounded this boat that was sunk someplace down in Elkanack. By the time we got it out of impoundment, because it had to be held for the trial, the bill for the impoundment was more than you could ever get for selling it for, so, having a place on site for the sheriff to store all those evidence, you know, rather than having to pay for private impoundment fees.
And in addition to those fees, we're seeing the equipment, the material that's stored there is being vandalized, and if it does have to be returned to the original owner, then we end up picking up the cost of the repairs to the vehicles or the equipment. Moving it into an area behind the Intervention Center will allow us to keep a much closer eye on it.
Any questions for Bill at all? Just one comment I want to make on that, the grant application, I had actually lunch with our lobbyists, and they have a new individual that's doing a lot of their grant writing, who is pretty heavy, came from the Wayne County Economic Development side of things. That grant is a $500,000 grant with a short-time turnaround. They are actually taking this thing and running it from A to Z. Those are the kinds of opportunities that, you know, the lobbyists are able to go after. If we, I talked to Dan Casey, there's no way they could turn that in-house, you know, so, that just, I think, re-solidifies whether we get the grant or not, but at least we have the ability to fill it out, get in the, you know, get in the hunt, get in the hunt, yeah, so to speak, so. That's it, the motion to...
Receive.
File Administrator's Report.
So moved and supported.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Laney's business, Steve?
A question for our clerk, just looking at the minutes, item 11-0, was that a roll call vote or a voice vote?
Tonight's 11-0?
11-0.
That was a roll call vote. Was there a match on that?
Well, $78,667 was the amount. I didn't know if we needed a roll call vote on that or not, but I thought it was a voice vote.
I'm sorry, it was a voice vote.
We need to fix it, or if it...
Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Department?
Was there a match on that, though? There was a county match?
You said to grant the amount, not to, grant the amount of $78,667, so if there's a match, then we would need it?
Then, yeah, anytime you've got to put county, county dollars at.
You were looking up...
I thought it said there was a match on it.
Do you want to do a roll call, just to be safe?
He was checking, he was checking.
It's going to take a long time.
Yeah.
Community Corrections Grants.
The Residential Substance Abuse Treatment.
Put it this way, if we have to do it, we'll bring it back at the next meeting if we, if we didn't do that properly, fair enough. Okay. Receiving file?
Mr. Chair, I would move to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Executive session, and then go to recess after that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we go into executive session for collective bargain, bargaining, and recess after that.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.